Perfect.
All right, so what I missed, I was able to watch some of it on the TV while I was trying to reboot my computer.
Is it like actually live or is there a lag?
There's definitely a lag, but it's like fifteen seconds maybe.
Well, that's not bad, just long enough that if one of us swears.
Although who's monitoring?
I don't know. I can't imagine this is a well-watched YouTube.
I don't know how to do that.
All right.
We were talking, and I know I popped away for a little while there too, but before break, Sean, we ended up talking more about the highcroft apartments and Francine was going through a little bit more about evaluation approach that they used and where we had gotten, to paraphrase, a little was because the number of units in each building in phase two is higher, even though each apartment may be a little less fancy and a little simpler to use, to use their phrase. There are more of them and so each building is being calculated at generating more revenue when they look at the number of bedrooms and I think you said the number of square footage, right, Francine was included, and then comparing that with other rental, you know, facilities. And then the one topic we started talking about, right, because these are new, so Francine's working on assumed data and trends and things like that, and we got into a discussion about vacancy rate and what assumptions were used on vacancy rate. Was it consistent with the assumptions in phase one and did we have any data to know if it was a correct vacancy rate or, or not? I think that's where I left the conversation.
Yeah, that sounds good, and but also I guess it was the potential rental income versus actual, since we don't have that data. Same with the vacancy rate.
Industry factors in like a 10% vacancy rate, that's like.
Is it that high?
I think so.
Well, and in looking.
Both of these factor in. I saw it on here somewhere. This is a vacancy rate of five, so maybe that's what it is.
Okay.
There's on, on what she said on these. Um, I don't, I don't quite understand that whole sheet, to be honest with you. But I mean, if we're talking about number of units, there, the Aspen Green comp is 181 units that has, um, that comes down to a square footage of 73. So what are we doing? You know, I don't understand how that equates.
And the other thing that I didn't quite get, so in the phase one, but maybe 100 through 900 includes not just phase one, but there's 128 units and I was thinking there were, I guess that's units total versus units per building, so number of buildings, per building, so it's number of buildings. I guess it might be eight and number, okay, there it is. Okay, it goes into 128 versus 496, okay. Um, it was one thing in looking over this, there's concept one and concept two, so it's similar to how they proposed other options to us before. And, you know, the, if we do the same as phase one, that's a lower rate, but if we, the second one is that 20% reduction. And if we figure 10% of that is rental that aren't, you know, being rented, then it's 10% on top of that that they're asking for, if that makes sense.
There, the, um, which would be the first concept, really? I'm confused at why we have, either we have Aspen really low or.
Francine, I think, could you talk about that a little bit if you've got that data?
All right, I'm back. What is it? What's your question, Regina? I'm sorry.
It was actually Sean's question.
Okay, Sean, I'm sorry.
Either we have Aspen Green value way too low or worth too high, I guess is basically the end of the the what, of what I'm looking at numbers live.
All right, so if I, I just took a look at Aspen Green and I used exactly the same costs per unit, the income approach, same, their value the same way, income approach. If I take their one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, the, uh, income per two different units, use exactly the same line, use the same vacancy factor, the same expense rates. Um, it brings the total cost per building, um, at Highcroft at $40,000 less. That's all I come down with, taking exactly the same income approach.
So when we've got the. Go ahead, Sean, sorry.
When I, if I take the rate, the market rent rate that we used, that was used for Aspen Green for their one bedrooms or two bedrooms and their three bedrooms, if I take that same market rent, the same vacancy factor and the same expense rate, all right, it lowers the Highcroft building value by $40,000.
That's interesting.
Oh.
Because he was saying they're exact, they're comparable. So I went in and I took a look. So if I use that same data, that same market rent, same vacancy factor and the same expense rate factor.
Right, but that's not what we're taxing, that's not what their current assessment is, so it's kind of pointless.
No, it is, because we're using an income approach to value them.
Okay.
That's how they're valued by the income approach. So we used, looked at market rent, so we're plugging in market rent. You know, one bedrooms, what's the market rent for that? What's the, you know, the two bedrooms, the three bedrooms? And then we throw in there a vacancy factor and an expense rate, all right, to give us, and then we come up with an income total value, that's what gives us a value.
So does that mean for Highcroft rise 1300 through 1900, there's four buildings there, each building's been currently assessed, uh, currently 100% valued at $4,114,804. Would we take 40,000 off of that to get to a similar
Yes.
comp as Aspen Green? Okay.
So Francine, since you're looking at that level of detail, are you seeing? It, it feels, it feels like the data's fooling us somehow in, in the way it's been presented. The insight into what, what we're see, you know, what is it about the High making it not, that's, that's causing this like way that I can, I can kind of validly see what the property owner, how the property owner was getting to their math and then it sounds like when we pull the Aspen Green numbers, the actual numbers that, that are in the system, we're also getting a very different, but, but another valid number.
All right, and, and I didn't get everything that you said, some of it was breaking, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna have you repeat again.
This feels confusing, Francine. Did, did the numbers you're seeing give you any idea why? Is it, is it the mix? Is it the mix of bedrooms? Like, there's a lot of one type of bedrooms in the Highcroft apartments and so that's screwing up the.
So again, so if we compare with the first phase and the second phase, so the phase that's under appeal, all right, there are four three-bedroom units, so I'm taking those four bedrooms, you know, they're three-bedroom, I'm taking the market rent for three bedrooms, right? There are six two-bedrooms, I'm taking the market rent for those, and there are 14 one-bedrooms. So of course, if we compare to the other ones, the other buildings, it's a different, so, so there's 24, a total of 24 units in those buildings. I'm not, all's I'm taking from Aspen Green because they're comparing that. I took a look at, I'm not looking at the total units that they have, I'm just looking at the market rent that was used. All right, so perhaps I'm not understanding what you're.
Aspen Green has a total of 181 units.
And that's.
In 11.
Yeah, so then if they're taking the whole thing and dividing it by the total number of units, you are gonna get a different, you know, rate per.
Yeah, but they've done that kind of all the way through.
The, the data, though, that we were presented in the packet doesn't seem to take into account different mixes of the bedrooms. I would assume that.
It does.
It does, okay.
Yes, take a look at each screenshot because I did, I did the rate on each one, okay? So that's.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I, yours maybe, I was looking at what the property owners gave us.
Okay, okay, no, no, that does not, so I don't, I have no idea what the market rent that they're using. You know, for their comparison, I don't know. That's not the way we ended up valuing it, so.
Well, I mean, 40,000 per building is much lower than what is being asked for here.
Why don't we just split the difference and call it 100 bucks a square foot? That's really only picking off, um, a negligible amount of the whole $16 million. Or what, what is, what does the board want to do?
I, I guess, I really like it when we can tie an adjustment to, you know, because of X information, we did Y. If, if the Aspen Green numbers are the numbers that the property owner was saying, hey, this, hey, this is a valid comparison to our setup. And then Francine's going in and saying, okay, let's take those numbers. I, whether that's, whether that's a big or a small adjustment compared to what they asked, I like the idea of mirroring that approach, that feels like the most fair way to do it. I don't know what that, I don't know what that comes out to square footage wise.
Okay.
Where that puts us.
So. Let's, let's make a motion and move on, so we could beat this thing all night.
So what's the, what's the, I mean, the, literally the, the, the thing I would, I would, I would, the way I would phrase it is align the, align the assessment of Highcroft as far as vacancy rate, assumed income, per number of bedroom, what was the third one, expense, expense rate? Align it with the assumptions used for the 2017 assessment of Aspen Green. I know that's not a number, but.
It's gonna be way off of what the, the owners think it should be.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a logical, yeah, that, that's what I'm trying to say, do we have another, besides the fact that they threw 20% down on the paper, do we have a logical way to say, okay, when we look at how we're assessing property in the town, do we have a, a logical way to get to their number? If we do, I'm hap, you know, I, I want people to succeed too, but I, I'm not seeing that yet.
I think the challenge is since phase one is so much cheaper. Although phase one, I don't know what phase one would look like if we applied the Aspen Green approach to phase one, if that would change those numbers at all.
Well, I get, so I guess a, a direct question to Francine then, is the current phase two, what we've, what we've gotten the assessment, is that currently aligned with exactly how phase one was? As far as, again, vacancy rate, assumed rent per number of bedrooms and expense ratio? Francine?
It's pretty, yeah, I'm just back on, I was doing some other calculations here. Actually, let me just double check that again here, go in there.
And I guess it's always, I mean, it's not, I mean, I sort of do have some comfort with what Sean was stating to just sort of split the difference here. Go to 100 because, a square foot, because that does still allow for phase two to be a higher, valued in a higher way because there are more units and more potential for that building to be bringing in income. But, um, but doesn't go as high as what we're looking at here, and it, it also is not the 20%, but definitely would reflect that the 10% in there, um, which may have not been considered in the past as far as the potential lack of income from units, uh, between rentals. Excuse me?
Phase two is last to the third one. 96 to 128.
Can you say that again, Sean? Sorry, I didn't catch.
There's fewer units in phase two, is what he's saying.
Well, but not per building, I think, right? Which is the difference.
Per building, per building.
There's fewer units per building in phase two?
No, phase one, there's 16. Phase two, there's 24.
Yeah, there's more units per building, but less buildings.
Exactly.
In phase two.
So Francine, were you able to see if phase two had, had big differences compared to phase one and the assumptions that were used on the, on the backend?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. There are no three bedrooms there, so let me just check my figures again here. Actually, it was comparable to what we had, yes. The only difference was the vacancy factor was a little higher.
For phase one?
For phase one. Yes. The rest, the per, the rent rate was exactly, exactly, pretty much the same thing.
Something, I, I know.
Again, there was no three bedrooms, so, yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Homeowners are only allowed to come in front of us once every five years. Um, is that the same with the commercial property? Because we really don't have data on, you know, income yet, and a year from now, we should, you know, they should, are, are they able to come back or no? Not until 2022?
No, that's, well, that's why we, um, again, even though we get, we sent out the income and expense reports and we, you know, request that every year. Um, we only use them during a revaluation and that's when we take a look at, you know, market rent and so on. And even though there's new construction, you know, and it's in between revals, that's what we're using is the market rent that we had. Um, you know, there are some, uh, adjustments made depending on, you know, um, the complex and so on and vacancy rate also, but we, we gather that information during reval year and that's what we've used here.
So which adjustment gives phase two a more favorable, in, in favor of the property owner, a more favorable adjustment, aligning it to the vacancy rate of phase one or aligning all the numbers to the assumptions in Aspen Green?
Definitely not as.
If I put it along with Aspen Green using the same thing, that's what I said, it reduces it by $40,000 per building. So I went and did the calculation based on the data, based on that comparison that you guys asked me to do. If there's anything else you want me to take a look at, I used, so I used the same market rent because Aspen Green does have a three-bedroom, it does have a two-bedroom, a one-bedroom. I'm using the same market rent rates per, per units, um, and the same vacancy factor and the same expense rate. If I go and change it back to phase one, we're gonna come up differently. And it's gonna be back to where we were.
So Aspen Green was a property, the property owner said, hey, this is similar to what we've got. So it's not like we're just unfairly picking one we think is, is similar. Sounds like we can go in and we can align the assumptions. They're similar enough, they're, they're working in the same market, right, that Simsbury is. I, I get that the end dollar value isn't where the property owner wanted, but it seems like we're, that's a fair adjustment to make.
Let me go check one more thing.
The dots, the dots get connected for me there, because what, because where, where I lose it a little bit going on pure square footage, the math makes sense, but.
But that's not how we're doing it.
Yeah, it's not how the market, you know, not my field, but a, a three-bedroom versus a one-bedroom, they're just, it feels like it's gotta be grounded in the fact that there's different bedroom sizes and those are just gonna be.
Yeah, and, and we have the same cap rate too, so. You're comparing apples to apples. If I take exactly the same rent rate, cap rate and everything with Aspen like they, they're using, that's what I come up with. I just wanted to double check, make sure that I had the same cap rate.
Are they comparable as far as the amenities and where they're located and?
There, uh, that's down on Hopmeto, it's one of the newer constructions as well. Oh, new, new, new construction, yes, so.
So I'd be ready to make a motion based on that.
Well, and I can do other calculations, but whatever you want me to, to check, I'll do, but that's.
What are you thinking, Sean?
Um, I, I don't know, honestly.
Today's been a night where we have become semi-postal office experts and now, you know, a foray into the relative rental assessment, assessments of one of their three bedrooms. This is, this is one of the dandy nights.
And, and I know, it's just that we're so far off on any expectation on, or hope on their part, which maybe their hope is in, you know, correct as far as what's fair, I, but I don't know, and that's what's making me really uncomfortable moving forward with, you know, 40,000 per building, because that's, it barely, it barely moves the numbers at all.
That's true, but you know, Lori, where you're in my head was before we got into this level of detail was it was such a, such a big property that we were already not feeling, you know, we were, it sounded like you and I were considering passing on trying any sort of alignment. So we can still go back to that, we can still punt. Um, we're still preserving their ability to go to a higher court, or we've, we've put something together that, I don't know, this video's getting played in the courthouse somewhere. I, I think, I think we connected dots in a defensible, reasonable way, and if they want to make that argument to someone else, okay. You know, the, the approach of punting it to Lori does preserve their ability to, to come back next year and not have to wait for a reassessment.
Actually, no.
No?
Because the court will make the decision, okay, and, and that would be final.
It would be the next reval or court, yes, once you change anything, they could change.
Okay.
And, and I guess the other thing is we don't necessarily want, you know, not a benefit having them go to court, um, because of additional challenges to the town.
Well, so there's, I, there's, I mean, to boil it down, there's kind of three ways. We can punt entirely. We can go with the alignment to the Aspen Green, um, or if the two of you want to pick another number. It, it comes down to a vote at the end of the day, doesn't it? Just because I think this is a reasonable way to do it, if you guys really feel strongly.
Probably.
I could, I honestly could go with the 100 per square foot, and although, so I think I figured out that number, if we did the 40,000 per building, the Aspen comparison, that gets to a 70% assessment of If we do the 100 per square foot, that knocks off almost, um, one and a half million, it gets down to 10,45,600. So that's a significant change. But it's still. And then it's like 7,500 more than their second concept, so it's not a 20% reduction. And it's, um.
My posit is just they're, they lick 20% off the sidewalk, so we, I don't feel necessarily constrained to, to, to ground how I'm thinking about it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I agree with that. I, I don't think we have to go there. But, um, but I think if we do the Aspen Green comparison, we're virtually making essentially no change. And I think that won't sit. Would be my guess.
I'm okay with that. I think it's defensible, but like I said, that's why I wanted to boil down to we've, we have, we've got, you know.
If you want to do the 10,456, let's do it, we'll vote it.
Um, the 10,45,600, is that what you're saying, Sean?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the 100 dollars a square foot.
Yep.
Which originally proposed. Um, all right, what do you, thank you Regina, any other comments? Because I, I do know, like, it is nice to have the apples to apples.
It is, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think being led to a strict square footage comparison or feeling a need to meet in the middle from a number that was made up, um, is something we should feel constrained to. I feel like it's a commercial property here. I don't think it's fair to the property owners of Aspen Green to, you know, artificially give a, a, a competing property a lower mill rate because they started negotiations in the 20%. So.
Well, I mean, we're already higher than we initially set for them previously, so using themselves as a comp.
Doesn't sound like it. When Francine just said when, when she did the numbers, the big difference was vacancy rate and that doesn't move it a lot. I think we're being fooled by the fact that we've got a different mix of bedrooms and, you know, different sized buildings.
But put, well, and actually, Aspen Green, still their assess per square foot is 73, so if we're at 100 with phase two of Highcroft, that's significantly higher.
Yeah, but square footage, you can have a small three, I, I'd pay a lot of money for a relatively small four-bedroom at this point in my life. More than I would a, a roomy studio.
Yeah.
But, and, look, we, we got other stuff on the agenda, if you want to put it to a vote, put it to a vote.
Okay, all right. Um, Francine, any other comments before I make a motion? Because I don't, I want to see if there's any other in- insight that we.
No, is there anything else that you wanted me to calculate based on square footage or, because that's not the approach we took, but what's the, I have nothing else. I, what I compared, I gave you the rent rates, the vacancy, the cap rate, same as Aspen. The, which is now gonna be a little less than phase one.
And I don't know if this is the question that's easily answered, is this unfair then to Aspen?
Actually, the only, the only thing that, difference, the difference is, again, uh, phase one, the vacancy rate. rate was a little higher. So the rent, the market rent was different, a little different than Aspen Green. Not by much, but again, in comparison. And I believe the vacancy factor may have come into play because it was brand new at the time. I'm not, I can't say. I'd have to look into it and I do not have access to that information at this point in time.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion, cause I, I, and we'll see where it goes next. But I don't want to be unfair to Aspen Green. That's my own, my concern here, but I don't know if this necessarily is with the data we have. So. All right. So I'll make a motion. With unique property ID number 30569461. That we set the assessed per square foot value at a hundred dollars. Is that correctly stated, Francine?
I would go off the total number. The 10, 4, 5.
The assessed property value would be 10,45,600. I just want to redo my math.
You have, you have to do each one individually. So you're stating a value that's for a total where these buildings are assessed separately.
Okay. So then let's.
Well, is it the same amount of units in each one? Aren't they all the same or no? Divided by four.
What's the value you're giving?
10, 4, 5, 6, 100.
Um, I just want to double check that the math was right on that. So we took a hundred and times it by 100,456 square feet. And that got us to 10,45,600. And if the buildings are identical.
Yes.
Okay. So that gets us to 2,511,400 assessed value for each.
Okay. So, um, you want to change your motion to set each?
Each, uh, you, each building unit, um.
Yeah.
So for unique value, unique ID number 30569461. Making a motion to have the assessed value 2,511,400.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed.
Opposed? One? And that's going to be set for all four of them? Do you need, do you need four different votes, Jennifer?
I think we do.
Yes, they're each individual. There, there's four diff, four different appeals.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion for unique ID number 30569481. That the assessed value be 2,511,400.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then unique ID number 30569501. I'd like to make a motion to have the assessed value be 2,511,400.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
And then unique ID number 30569521. Like to propose, make motion to have the assessed value be 2,511,400.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And I believe that's all four.
I'm gonna lose my pen. I haven't gone anywhere.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just filling out this paperwork if you guys want to.
Um, actually, um, you're going to have to do a correction on that. I'm sorry. So is that just the building itself? Because each one has a little different outbuildings. So when you said the 2.5 million, you know, uh, and whatever it was. You're, were you stating the final assessment for each of those properties?
That's what I thought, but if there's additional buildings that or.
Each, yeah, each.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right. So I apologize for that. Each actual apartment building is exactly the same. However, each one, so 1,300 has different outbuildings and each one was had so many detached garages. All right. So 1,300 had an assessment for outbuildings of 41,440.
In addition to.
Yes. Okay. And I can give you each one. So when you stated that 2.511,400, that was just for the apartment building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, let's, let's leave along the garage. We're going to factor that, leave whatever they're assessed at as that number. That's my, that's the motion, I guess I should say. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. And I definitely have some hesitation, but, um, so.
You have a copy of each property card?
Yeah.
All right. I just want to be clear. So when we get that information that we know what to do, and I wanted to make sure that you all have the same data and that we're all talking the same values and what's included and not included in that adjustment.
Which one? So 1,900 has them, well, which is the other one?
1,900 actually has the most. 1,900 has outbuildings with an assessment of 232,060.
Um, can you give me that number again?
232,060. And that's the assessment. That 2.5 million was the assessment that you gave, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you take that 2.5 and add the 232060.
Um, right. 2,743,460. And that's for 1,900.
Can you read that number again?
Is that 2,743,460? Did I hear you correctly?
Correct. Okay. Um, so do we amend a previous motion or just make a new?
I think you need to clarify all of the motions to include the fact that you are only adjusting the assessed value on the building value, building assessed value only. Outbuilding values are not being adjusted, if I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Why don't we just add that to the number and then vote it, vote that, right?
Okay. But there, yeah. So we'll, you'll just, if that's how you want to do it, I'll give you each one.
Right. I got 1,900, which is 306, 6, excuse me, 305, 69521.
That's the 1,900 building you're referring to.
Then 1,500 has a total of 94,360.
Correct.
I'm looking at, what is that total?
20, 265,760. 2,605,760, is that right?
2,605,760 is what I get.
Yep.
Number 1,500, Highcroft Place.
Yep.
Okay. Which one that's?
And then the last one is 41,440.
Which, which street number are we looking at? Highcroft?
Yeah, that's, uh, 1,300.
41,440, okay. So it's a total for 2,552,800.
And 40.
And 40, yep.
2,552,840. And the 1,000 building.
Punch, punch my numbers in wrong. I didn't, I actually use the calculator.
We good? I think that was all, right?
There's no change on 1,700.
Yep.
Okay.
Make it official, please. Bravely your motion reflecting just assessed value on the building.
So do we need to do that for, we need to do that separately for each motion?
Yes.
So for unique ID, 30569461. There will be no change to the assessed value for the outbuildings. In addition to.
Mark second.
Is that it?
All in favor? Yeah. I'm confused why, why would you do that?
I think Jennifer just wants to make sure that the, uh, the motion, that everybody's clear on the changes that will be made in the minutes as well.
Okay.
I, the reason I want it clarified is because the original motion referred only to an assessed value. It did not refer to whether it was the total assessed value or the building versus outbuilding. So it is a change to the original motion. It needs.
Exactly.
So do you want us to give the total assessed for everything or just make the, the change to the motion that there will be no change in the assessed value of the outbuildings?
I think you should probably clarify the entire motion.
Okay. All right. Um, so for 1,300, Highcroft Place, unique ID 30569461. The total assessed value, building and outbuildings is 2,552,840. Reflecting no change in the outbuilding assessed value.
Aye.
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 For 1,500, Highcroft Place, unique ID 30569481. The total assessed value for the building and outbuildings is 2,605,760. Reflecting no change in the outbuilding assessment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone opposed?
Oh.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Um.
Kind of right on.
For 1,900, Highcroft Place, unique ID 30569521. The total assessed value, building and outbuildings will be 2,743,460. Reflecting no change in the outbuilding assessment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And then I believe the motion we made earlier for 1,700 can still stand because there's no outbuildings. Is that okay?
That's what I have, that there are no outbuildings.
Thank you for that.
All right. Are we done with Highcroft?
We are. Waste deep into Cobtail if we want to jump to that one next. Francine, I'm going to turn hosting over to you for the moment. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Francine emailed us the property card for 11 Cobtail because that featured so prominently in, in Mr. Cohen's discussion there.
Okay. Looking that up.
Well, I, I don't want to turn this into a conversation about someone else's property, but I did have a question Francine on, on the 11 Cobtail. On the second page, um, under description, right, baserate, basement, basement garage base, blah, 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 blah. They, you, you sum those up and you do get to a value before depreciation. That's quite a bit higher than what we've got for 15. And then there's a depreciation slash adjusted amount of like 281,000. And once you take that in, it, you get a final value that, that brings where this property is from an assessment perspective, pretty in line with 15 Cobtail. Are you able to see it all? I can't connect the dots on where that 281,000 came from. The only thing I could see was the overall condition of this property is average.
The only thing I could see was the overall condition of this property is average slash good, and 15 is, is just a good.
Okay, so that depreciation adjustment is based on the year of construction and the overall condition that comes into factor.
Because that same line on 15, depreciation slash adjusted amount is only 76,000. And if it's based in part on the age of the property, that doesn't quite make sense because 15 Cobtail is 10 years older than 11.
So 11, we have an overall condition of average good.
And that feeds into that number?
Year built of 98, year built of 98. It's a class 12, let's see here. And you're comparing it to 15, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and 15, we have as in good condition, same class, good condition, so the other one has a lower condition, average good being lower than good. All right, and there's a grade factor on 15 Cobb of a minus 15 grade factor. So that brings, it's an adjustment that was made for the class of the building.
Grade as in steepness of the lot?
No, 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 the, the class, we have nine being like an average dwelling, 10, 11, 12, the classes based on the quality of
Great square footage and all that?
Nope, so, so it's a high-class dwelling. And the grade factor, though, appears to have a minus 15, so telling us it's under a 12, but not an 11, so higher than 11, but lower, a little lower than a 12, so it's an adjustment that was put in, minus 15 for the grade.
On 15?
So what is it? Are you in the system, Francine?
I'm in the system for 11, but I'm looking at the property card for 15.
Do you, can you tell us if 15 is set to average good, what that does to the value?
I can do that, yes.
So I, I am, while Francine's losing on Cobtail, that, that make it not quite apples to apples, so 15 has a gunite pool listed as an extra, and then a, a paver patio. I guess I'm a little surprised 11 doesn't have anything in the back there, but those two items together are adding almost 40K of value to the property.
Right, so you said you wanted to bring the condition down to average, you said, or average good?
Average good, right, the same as 11?
That would make it same as 11.
What that would do to the value?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Working remotely is not as quick. All right.
Send you guys the field card, or the property cards for 11 Cobb too, if you'd like them.
Oh, I had already done that.
For 11?
Yeah. Oh, no, yes, I did, yes, that's, yeah, those are the ones that they wanted to see, I sent earlier. All right, so it brings it down from 815,125 to 809,276. So alls I did was change the overall condition from good down to average good.
And it only changed $7,000?
Yep, 809,276. Now 11, go back to 11.
11 has an economic depreciation value added to it. And?
And that's, yeah, so it doesn't have, it doesn't have a lower minus grade factor, that's zero, all right, so that's no, right. The physical, external, the external obsolescence and physical, that's based on, an adjustment based on, because of the market for the higher-end residences, that was an adjustment that was made to bring them down, based on the market.
That, so you mean the number 10 next to economic depreciation percent on 11 Cobtail?
Yes, the economic depreciation, yep. And
Not a lot.
So
This appraisal, what do we use for that? I mean, their appraisal is at 675.
Right. So if I were to make an adjustment on the economic depreciation, let me go back to 15. All right, so I'm going to give it a 10, just like the other one did. Right, so we're down to 750, 786. So what I did is I added a 10% economic depreciation on it. Same thing that 11 had.
And it's somewhere in the mid sevens, which is also lining up on the five-year sales history. I, I've, I've looked at this a couple of times, I can't connect the data that he's putting here about the state of 15 and about the neighborhood and about the five-year sales history and get into 645.
675.
I'm sorry, 675.
Okay.
With six, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting there from this package of data. I am getting comfortably to a number in the, in the mid to bottom quarter of the seven.
Yeah. All right, so that value again is, is 750, 786.
I mean
Sorry, go ahead, Sean.
Go ahead. Yep. I mean, they're saying this is as of 10/1/17, right, which is our, which is the rebound date, so. I think 675 is a little low, I think 750 is probably a little high.
23 Cobtail, 23 Cobtail in the five-year sales history in the appraisal, similar square footage, slightly less land, but not much, 740.
Right, I mean, there, you can't just look at that one page of a, of an appraisal.
I know. Right, but the, their expert number is leading to a number that still feels a little bit low based on all the rest of the data, trying to use the appraisal to connect dots to a, to another number. I like, you know, when, when we talk about how, see your things like that, what, what you guys have, have talked about happening there is like high-end house economic depreciation. So, you know, making an adjustment based on that number, aligning that number with, again, a property that the property owner thinks is a good comparison, and that leading us to a number that's around, you know, the 740s, the 750s, that feels reasonable.
So they have a sales comparison value of 675, the cost approach is developed value of 7.
I'm sorry.
710, on page two of the appraisal. In the bottom. There. How do you guys feel about?
710's still feeling low compared to the rest of the data we have, 730?
Do I split the difference and go 720?
Either one works for me. I go stop. Either one, if you guys want to make a motion?
Make a motion for Unique ID 31790400 for the market value to be 710,000, is it? Yes, market value, 720,000, sorry about that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I go enough, we'll leave that.
What's your dog's name?
Iko.
Tycho?
I, Iko.
Oh, because my dog, my dog's Tycho, T-Y-C-H-O, I thought, thought it was the same name for a second.
That would be, that would be
Don't remember, do we have to do anything regarding 42 Muni Sung since they didn't come in, or we, we just pass?
I think we just passed.
Just no show, no action.
You have the motion, no action.
Unique ID 308,74200. Make a motion for no action based on appearing. You get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where do we want to go next? Did we do Northfield?
Want to do, change to Northfield?
That was the leaky house, leaky property, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Deferred maintenance.
It's a tough one because I feel for her, but that house just, you know, she just bought it at this price, what, what do you think, knowing the market a little bit better that way?
I mean, it's the central district, it's, it's 270 seems about, right? The condition doesn't sound that great for 270, really. I had a, what is it, one bathroom?
No, I think four bedroom.
Oh, that's four bedrooms?
I believe it's a four bedroom. Four bedrooms.
Two and a, two and a half baths.
Yep, I mean, really, in that tiny little house?
It's like 2100.
It's not that, yeah, it's not that tiny, it's 21.
There's an addition behind the garage, there's an addition behind the garage that you don't see, if you look at the sketch, you'll see.
I get that, yep, that makes sense.
That's what I mean, it's like
That's cheap for that size house, in this, in this area. My guess is those things would factor into that price, because that, that property should be worth 325 if it were in good shape.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see that there's an adjustment, I see that there's just a little more investment in the house that you need to get it up to what a 2100 square is, and a, a 270 market price gives you that room. I'm not, I'm not inclined to make an adjustment on this, although I, I feel genuinely bad for the homeowners if they didn't think through that through, but
And Francine visited, correct? Yes, yes, in February, and I did an overall condition change from very good, good, down to good. Lowered the square footage area finished in the basement. And made some adjustments also to basement area that I removed in the breezeway area, which is a livable area between the garage and the first, made an adjustment there.
And, and do you think the condition is good, good, or is it average good, if you were there?
Based on, I changed it down to good, based on comparing it to others, comparing it to the actual year of build, and then that 21 by 28 area behind the garage, that one-story frame, that was an addition back in the trying to remember now, what we had that as, as an addition. Eighties, back in the eighties, that addition was back, built in the eighties. So based on that, looking at the year it was built, and that's what I usually go by for the overall condition, how it is. And based on that, that's what I brought it down to, good. Yeah, so I brought it down from, so my adjustment, which doesn't reflect, you know, the 2019, so 2019, the assessment was 193,990. The adjustments that I made after the grandest was finalized, after I went in in February, brings it down to 189,120, which gives it a market value of 271,75.
Do we have some proposed changes based on Francine actually going out there? And even before that, this didn't seem like a crazy number. I mean, yeah, so, so those changes, Francine, were late enough that we have to make a motion to, to accept and incorporate them?
I mean, if you want me to take a look at, you know, as she was saying, for the, the property in the back, you know, we don't have an adjustment on the land for that, which would be an influence factor. But Sean?
Sure.
You
Yep.
Again, you know the market area and all that, so use your judgment.
It's like, it's a corner lot.
Yes, it is.
So I can see how it would kind of run off, sometimes corner lots are more feasible, you know? But, you know, for getting more runoff from it, I guess, it does kind of come downhill right there. I wouldn't say a hill, it's more like a bowl. But it's enough to cause runoff, I guess. They've actually got like a, like a farm gate so that they can, I don't know what they're putting back there, but
It's, it's a way to access the back, that's the only way they can access if they want to go in with a trailer or something, you know, to, or equip It's, it's a way to access the back. That's the only way they can access if they wanted to go in with a trailer or something, you know, to, or equipment.
Okay.
If there's a small adjustment there, if you made a. Not opposed to it if the board isn't.
If the board chooses me to take a look and see what it does, I'll do that for you.
Okay.
Let me just save what I was doing on cocktail here. Because I do think, you know, when you're buying a home, you look at all these things, so the. Existing problems, they were aware of going in.
True.
That's why I'd asked if anything had changed because hoping, you know, that was, that we have something to work with.
Because I was, earlier I was trying to go back and take a look at the other properties. For influence factors, I don't recall, even after I went through before I made my changes, I don't recall seeing anything, but that is a corner lot. Let's, let's see here.
Did he vote to remove the late fee on the governor's house? Did we, did we do the motion to remove the late fee and everything? We already did that, right?
Yeah, we did that one.
The only one left from this evening after Northfield is C-Tech.
Yeah, okay, good. That's what I have too.
All right, so if I put in. A five percent. Influence factor to the house, to a lot, brings it down to two sixty-four, five oh five.
Four thousand, six thousand dollar change. Regina, what do you think?
I think four to six thousand dollars might be enough for them to address the drainage issue. I have a larger lot. I had some pretty extensive drainage stuff go in and it was like. Nine or ten. So. If that's the reason we're making the adjustment, that's an adjustment that might be enough to let them fix the property.
Okay.
I guess it's to say that, yeah, that, that works for me.
All right, so it's a five percent influence factor. And for topo, and it brings it down to two sixty-four, five oh five. That's the market value. So that gives us an assessment of one eighty-five, one fifty.
Okay, so motion to. Set the assessed value. Unique ID one nine three nine nine zero at one eighty-five, one fifty, you said? Is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
Can I get a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye. 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 Well, I, I think I, I like Francine's thoughts on, what I want to make sure is that we're not doing something that. Adds a new level of complexities to what the town is to figure out with whatever's going on settlement wise. If, so we made an adjustment on this. The board being consistent with our adjustment from last year and carrying that forward in terms of depreciation or. I think the person said that they thought there was some disposal. I think you said that maybe there wasn't. But continuing that logic as a board, I, I think is the direction we want to go.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the town's best interest to put this issue to bed and refund number and move forward.
Yeah, and for us as a board to be consistent. So if we made an adjustment in twenty eighteen, plus that was overturned, that should be the basis for a twenty nineteen whatevers.
Okay. Sorry. Do you know what the number is?
I'm looking through the documents.
So we. We took off fifty-three little, almost fifty-four thousand last year. From two sixty-nine to two fifteen. But then this year, their personal property declaration page states two eighteen. And she mentioned something about ten percent. We took off ten percent, but fifty-three thousand isn't ten percent of that. More like twenty, but.
I don't have anything related to. What the attorney were referencing either.
I'm trying to pull up the adjustment from twenty eighteen.
Okay. We've, I've got the page that Lori signed saying the new, new assessment, assessment was two fifteen.
Two fifteen, four twenty. Two fifteen, four twenty, B A A. Yeah.
Yep. So what I would expect is that number. Two fifteen, four twenty is the basis and then whatever the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Normal algorithm depreciation schedule is, is continuing down from that. Is that everyone else's assumption also?
Yep.
So, so Francine, when we put that number, so. The, when we put it at an ending of twenty eighteen. Assessed value of two fifteen, four twenty. What is the depreciation give us as a new assessed value for twenty nineteen? I think, I think that's where it would ask that question.
All right, so let's see here. I'll go back to twenty eighteen. All right, so. I would need to, so we were using. All right, so let me do, let me use the same figures that you had, that you approved last year. Unfortunately, I'm not going to say them out loud because we're talking personal property here. But I'm going to use exactly the same and use the depreciation for twenty nineteen. Tell you how it come up.
You just lost Lori.
Yeah. I'll call her.
Oh, that's not good. My children are still up. They should have been put to bed an hour ago. What I get for leaving them with dad.
No yawning.
Never thought I could be so tired being in my own household, I.
Try this again. I just put the wrong numbers down, so. Almost there. In my defense, and I'm working with a smaller computer here, just a little laptop.
No worries.
All right. So that brings us down to one seventy-four, six.
Okay, that's the assessed, the new assessment?
That would be, let me go back there. That's the. Yes, one seventy-four, six would be the new assessment. That's seventy percent.
Okay, so the, we don't have Lori, but let's make this motion.
Sorry, just to, just to note something. So they also talked verbally in the meeting about there being disposals assets. I don't see anything in this package that says assets were disposed of. Francine, do you have anything? That was submitted to you that talks about disposed assets?
Do you have a copy of the. Personal property declaration with you? Was that provided? Because I don't have any disposed assets in the system for twenty nineteen.
No, I don't. Oh, wait, the, the, the. I'm seeing personal property, hold on. I was looking at. Rental Entertainment.
There is, I don't see it in here. I mean, I don't see it in any.
There, do you have a copy? Do you have a, a copy of the declaration?
That's this, right?
Um, hold on, I can't, I'm, I was, yes.
What do you mean, you can't, you can't read a photocopy through webcam?
I had it on the calculator, so I, yes, there is a section on there that talks about disposed assets, listing of disposed assets.
Which section is that, Francine?
Um, it'll be on the bottom of page. I'm trying to remember now, is it page? Three or, but on the very bottom, there's a section, it just says disposed assets listing. They just need to list them. Detailed listing of disposed assets. It would be on the bottom of the page.
Reconc, oh, here we go. Reconc, bottom of page six showing reconciliation of fixed assets.
Nope, not the reconciliation. It's an actual lined. Let's see, is it page?
Because under, because in that, in that box was assets disposed since ten one eighteen. That's why I thought that was it.
But no, they have to actually list it. It's not the reconciliation. They have to actually list what they're disposed of. And that there is a detailed listing of disposed assets. They have to do a detailed listing. Let me go to the deck, a blank declaration and take a look here.
Francine.
Zero.
Yes.
Can you see if Lori's in your waiting room? I think you're still the host.
Oh, that's right, huh? No, I don't, oh, yes, yes, yes.
No, my copy jumps from page three.
To being host.
Of the personal property declaration to page six. Is that yours also?
I'm going to give it back to you, Jennifer. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. All right.
Lori, we're checking on the solo panels, one.
No number to it anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Nope, sorry, say that one again.
They would have, in the, on page six at the bottom, that number is zero.
Aye.
So. They would have had to list it somewhere else that we don't have, but it doesn't matter that they didn't list it because.
Francine says there's another list somewhere.
It should, let me. Yeah, I'm not sure what was included in your packet there. Was everything? I'm just getting a blank copy here. And that's the long form, I believe.
But it would say zero. There would be a dollar there, right?
No, it would be, they would have to have listed. No, it's not, it's not the reconciliation. Yeah, I mean, there could be a figure there, but they need to list them. It's not on that, the listing is not on that page, so that's the reconciliation.
Right, but if they didn't list, if, if there's, the dollar is zero, then they couldn't have listed.
Exactly. If, okay, so I didn't know you were, okay, so you're saying that it says zero. Okay, so yeah.
Right.
You could, yeah, I would put that down.
We don't have page four, which is where this would have been, but.
So.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that we're not seeing any disposal. The only adjustment that we see making is again aligning the twenty nineteen to follow the same path as the twenty eighteen.
Yep.
Perfect.
And if you could read that number to me when we now we have Lori, I can write it down.
Okay, it was one seventy-four, six hundred, so one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred. So what I did, Lori. Sean asked me to go back and put the same values that were used last year that the board had approved with the new depreciation for twenty nineteen. And we get an assessment of one seventy-four, six.
Okay, that sounds good. And then.
All right, so.
It was comparable to last year.
Unique ID four two five eight four four six, set the new assessed value, one seventy-four, six hundred. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that completes today's. Now that other pile that you guys have.
It's a sense of satisfaction though getting through today's.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty short-lived. You really didn't let us rest on our laurels there, Chairman.
If we can finish in six minutes, I'd be thrilled.
So.
Not that many, really. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And do we want to do first?
Let's do. McLaddens.
Okay.
This, this was the, uh, all this stuff, is it other restaurants or something?
That's right, it included the McLaddens, I think, in West Hartford and here.
Francine, do we have any recommendations on that?
McLaddens?
Yeah.
And then, let me just pull up the information that I have.
Did you work up of the 2018?
No. They, that was a new purchase. And that was, 2018 was an estimated declaration. This declaration this year was supposedly an actual, and we processed as they filed their declaration. As it was filed. Don't want to mix up my paperwork here. All right. All right, so assessed as declared, so that 202480 was as declared. 2018. 2018, if I recall, they were just filing as the previous owner had filed. Is that correct, Jennifer? I don't know if Jennifer's there. They had followed the assessment. It was a late, it was a late filing last year. Now I take that back. Well, they had acquired the business on September 13th. And it was just an estimated declaration at that point in time. They hadn't gathered all their data, I guess. This year.
So they're at, we have 304,000, they have 85,000.
What we actually processed is exactly what they, their declaration, what they declared. There was a question.
Remembering this, because it did seem like there was a bunch of stuff that just evaporated.
Right, and the other restaurant.
They acquired, so this is based on their actual cost of purchasing the business and the data that they provided. Um, I think you have that there. Various fixed assets and so on. The equipment, furniture fixtures and equipment fixed assets. It's there, that amount in the letter. So we don't base it based on a purchased at auction. I think they were trying to do like a, if they did an appraisal, and that's not how it's done. So we kept.
There is an appraisal from Gillette or something.
Yeah, so we kept their declaration based on their actual cost and the asset reporting is included. It is what it is.
My, so, um, my recommendation on this is gonna be no action, because I don't see how we can figure out what's what. They didn't even tell us, their, their claim was, some of the stuff on here that they put on here is that other restaurants, so how do we know what's here?
No, they show you, they do show what's at, um. Will come, they, the 91318, if you're looking at the consolidated attachment. That's for this location, Simsberry. That's their writing Sims acquisition for Simsberry.
That says 200, okay.
No, look at the, um, the asset report that's included.
So they're 84,620.
Um, what are you looking at?
Bottom of page seven of the 2018.
No, not the personal property declaration.
Okay. Moving on to.
The report. Along with their appeal application.
I'm not understanding which report. Francine, which, which piece are you telling us to, okay.
It's, there's a letter, you should have a letter, exactly, that's, uh, yes. So probably on the other side, Sean. Do you see something where it says seven-year GDS property? Number one, equipment and acquisitions.
Equipment and acquisition, yep.
And it says Sims next to it? It's like a, in bold handwriting. Their accountant identified what was for Simsberry on that listing, because as you said, there are other locations. So their accountant did, did handwrite Simsberry acquisition next to what pertain to this location.
And that federal asset report, those Simsberry tagged assets lines up with what they, they put in the Simsberry personal property declaration?
Yes, exactly, for 10/1 of 19.
All right, then we're good. So 84 is the right number.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-four, 1,620.
No.
No?
No, the, the, the 303 plus.
So the declaration. Their, their appeal is changing what they actually declared. They're appealing a lower assessment based on doing an appraisal of the equipment after they purchased it. Their declaration, the assessment that we currently have for everything is 202480. That's the depreciation of that amount, their acquisition amount, plus
Right.
Uh, some supplies.
Okay, um, that number is higher than, their number would be higher. This is Sims is 100,000, and then Sims is 303,000, that's 403.
But we can't take, we're not taking that, we're not taking that 100,000. That's goodwill. We don't do, we don't take that. We don't assess the goodwill.
Okay.
We're only, we're only taking the equipment, the equipment and acquisition, the one that has a number one, seven-year property. Okay. Because it's.
I mean, you're gonna have to give us a little more where, because I don't see what they want us to change. They're 84,620 and 304,000 dollars. Where, where, tell, I'm missing something.
I don't have a copy of the appeal application with me. My recollection is that they, after they filed their declaration based on their actual acquisition cost, they had an appraisal done to lower the value. And that's what they're going by. Personal properties based on cost, what their acquisition cost. They are providing us with that asset reporting, which shows us what their acquisition cost is.
Because if, because their dishwasher may be a few years old, right? So it's gonna appraise low. If they didn't have a di- a new dishwasher, and so they pay the cost of.
So wouldn't that be the number they're putting on there? For 2018 personal property declaration?
No, that 2018 was an estimated declaration. They did not have all their data on that 2018. That 2018 is based on an estimate. We have, they have provided here the asset report of what the actual cost is. That's what we use, that's what they originally filed, their accountant also.
I have a bunch of appraisal from restaurant equipment places.
Sean, I think it's this one, right, Francine? Is this the right document?
Does that say, yes, exactly.
And so this start item here, Sean.
Yeah.
I see that, that's.
Yeah.
Which is where they're, so this is, you know, Francine's original one. So that 300 and change is showing up in the applied amount. And then it's being depreciated, because this is, this is, this is from 2018, right? This 303?
No, that's from this year. That's from this year, 303.
I know just, I'm following just enough of this to confuse. I am missing something.
All right, hold on, let me just get to that, uh.
Looks like I have.
No, hold on. So the only thing, actually. There's a collection that can be made there, actually, I just picked up on. Because it was actually purchased. So we're depreciating it at 95%. That should have been keyed in, so that is a clerical error. Good. Sean, is that what you were trying to say? So it should be at 90%. So that 303 should be entered as a 2018 acquisition at 90%, not 95%. Okay, so they're.
Exactly what you mentioned, Sean, right? That the depreciation should have been 90 instead of 95%.
Well.
I guess I wasn't paying attention. See, yeah. See, they, it was entered as they processed it. They actually included it on the 10/119 line on their declaration. Really, it should have been included on 10/118 line, that 303. So it was keyed in exactly as it was filed. So if that is, all right, do we, do we all understand each other?
No, but.
I think I'm missing a document, because.
So if you look at the, if you take a look at the actual personal property declaration for 2019, okay, if you go to page five, and actually I have a copy, I don't know why I didn't say I didn't have it before. I do have it here. Page five of that declaration. You see their original cost? They put it online, on the very first line, 10/119, with a percent good of 95%. That's the depreciation amount. They should have keyed that in on the second line for an acquisition of 10/118.
Can you show me the front page of the document you're referring to?
I'm still confused, because they put, what is the appellate estimate of the market value of the property? They have $84,000. And we have a total market value of 304,000.
Yes, okay, so again, so they filed a personal property declaration on October 1st. Well, for the October 1st, 2019. The declared original cost is in line with their detailed asset listing from the accountant that shows the Simsberry amount in bold that's handwritten next to it. Okay?
Yeah, nothing, I don't have a handwritten thing.
No, it's not hand, the report is an actual report, but
Yep.
It says federal asset report, exactly, yes, Sean, that, okay?
Yep.
If you see in bold handwriting next to it, equipment and acquisition, it says SIM, exactly, that's their actual cost, okay, for the Simsberry location. So when they filed their declaration this year, they reported the actual cost, what they should have. However, I do see now that they should have reported that cost, that same cost on the line below at, with a higher depreciation, lower depreciation at 90% instead of 95% because it was acquired prior to 10/119. It was acquired in September. That's sure, so it should be in 10/118, okay? That's where it should be reported. So it'll come down a little bit, but not at that $84,000. Am I, did I explain myself?
Yeah, I did. Somebody tell me what the depreciation, what the number is.
Okay, so if I go into that account and I put that cost on the right depreciation, I'll tell you what I come up with.
Yes.
So again, it was keyed in as they declared it, exactly the same. But now looking at everything, it appears that there is an adjustment that can be done on that based on their actual acquisition date of acquisition. All right, so that gives us a change of, from an assessment of 202480 down to 191870. So what I did is I took that cost, their original cost, based on their asset detailed listing and changed it from a 95% depreciation down to 90% where it should have been reported. Because it was acquired in 2018, not 2019. So although they put it on that 10/119 line, in actuality, it should have been down below. Year ending, 10/118, at 90%.
All right. Cool, that was confusing.
Now I'm missing the federal asset documents.
You don't, it's not included in your packet.
No, but, oh, you know what? I wasn't looking into what was, I was looking at what I what I brought home with me from the last meeting. I should have looked in the packet. I should have looked in the packet. So does that mean we think we're ready to make a motion?
Trying to find the top sheet near.
Um. Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion. Yeah, here we go. Here's the Sims.
So the motion is for Unique ID two zero one eight zero four six to correct the clerical error for item code sixteen. Correct that the, the value should be entered as a twenty-eighteen acquired cost, not a twenty-nineteen one.
Exactly.
And then that will bring the total assessment for this ID number. So including both item codes sixteen and twenty-three, will bring that number to one ninety-one eight seventy.
Yes, that's what I have. That's what this, that's what the system has.
You're only second to shout if you can repeat it all.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Next we have ten Scarborough. I think there's appraisal of this one as well. Oh, no.
Oh, that's right.
It looks like this is another one where we've got some different ways of looking at the condition to try to be more in line with the homeowner's appraisal.
I have a recommendation in here. To set the assessment at five fourteen one fifty. From Francine.
Hold on, what was that number again?
Five fourteen one fifty.
All right. I'm just trying to find where, so that looks like that brings it in line with the average condition field card.
Yep. And she made that adjustment on the field card. I think you guys have copied that.
Sorry, I didn't quite, I didn't quite catch that, Sean.
Yeah. All right, I'm lost, you guys. Five seventy-four.
Five fourteen one fifty.
Okay, here's the five fourteen.
I'm ready to second that if you're on board, Lori.
Um. Unique ID three oh four one set the assessed value at five hundred fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Next we have the exemption, so. They got, these folks, this is the veteran, they still haven't filed their DD two fourteen with the town yet. So we just need to basically, there's nothing we can do here, so. Hopefully next year they'll do it, and we can take care of it, or if it's necessary to take care of it.
The motion is to take no action.
Is the request is solely based on that veteran's exemption? The request is solely based on that, okay?
Yeah, and that's the one where in order for us to, to take action on the exemption, it needs to be recognized in the system, which means that DD two fourteen would have to be in the system. And unless it is, we don't.
Yesterday, when I was at town hall, they still didn't have it yet. So, I mean, our hands are tied. You know, we told them what to do. We just gotta do it. So Unique ID three oh nine zero seven two two oh, the motion is to take no action. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I don't want to stand this too long, but is that state statute? Can the town do something to automatically be able to accept, you know, make the changes?
Like Park Place in Monopoly, that, that's the key to everything. It unlocks everything. But if you don't unlock the vault, you can't get it. I mean, that's just the way it is.
The question is, at a, at a government level, why are we making our veterans who've already earned is a bad word, but earned a DD two fourteen, making them jump through hoops with more paperwork? Why isn't someone fixing that part of it?
The DD two fourteen does so many different things. All they have to do is literally file a copy with it, with the town clerk, and that's it. That would, that then cycles it off to every single department within the municipality. So, yeah, I mean theoretically, if it's filed with the state, they should share it with each municipality, but come on, we're, this is Connecticut.
Or it's issued by, it's issued by the federal government in the first place. You know, if they owe taxes, that would get spread down to everyone, but.
Yeah. They can get a ten percent reduction on the property tax.
Yeah.
All right, one forty-six, Great Pond, is that next?
Francine had a couple of updates to this one, I believe. Right?
Yes.
Set the assessor's note page. Could you? Francine, could you explain the note? What, what actually changed in the point seven five?
All right, so what I did is I made an adjustment to, and this is after the list was filed. The area above the garage in the back, if you take a look at the sketch. First of all, well, that was, that original change was done for the grand list. Changing it from three-quarter finished area down to just under three quarters. Okay, so when we, like second floors or whatever, if it's not fully a full finished area because of knee walls or whatever, you know, it's either fifty percent finished, seventy-five percent finished or whatever. So after I went in, it was, it wasn't three quarters. It was more than fifty percent. It wasn't three quarters. Did some calculations, measurements, and came down that it was point seven. All right, so it didn't change a lot, but it did. What I just did after reviewing this, after the assessment was done on it for the grand list this recently, is that area above the garage, which is an accessory studio. I made a change on that. I'd have to take a look at my copy that I sent to you guys, we just saw that property card. And changed it from a finished area to accessory studio. So the, the price per square footage is different, okay? So by making that change, actually marking that as an accessory studio above the garage as opposed to the rest of the house, you know, finished area, story framed, it brought, it brought it down.
It sounds like accessory studio is meant for it's, it's separate somehow, and so it's not being used as part of the main, like, living space?
Exactly. And what I also did was I removed the extra kitchen that we were assessing, because now it's all part of that accessory studio, but at a different rate. So by removing the additional kitchen, you probably have the prior card and then the new updated card that I just did. And the change of that brings it down to, I'm trying to see now. Eight fifteen, nine forty-four, I think.
Eight, eight one five?
Nine four four, do you see that? I gotta bring up the card, because I couldn't, I'm, I'm not home.
I don't.
And, hold on, let me just.
We have, my card shows sixty-two.
Yes, but you should have, I sent a new, a printout, some changes that I did after that.
I have this.
I'm not seeing the updated card. Let me see, hold on. Pull it up here.
The updated card is the eight fifteen, nine forty-four market value?
Yes, was that included in the packet?
It should be.
Okay. I don't, I don't see the updated card, but I think.
Are you looking at your old packet or your new packet?
Look at the new one. Yeah, I'm not seeing it here.
I also, I have a field card, but it ends with a total market of eight sixty-two, and it's the only field card in my packet.
But I think if those changes bring us to eight fifteen, nine four four, that.
Let me go ahead and.
For me. Email, I can email it to you right now if you want, if you don't have it in your packet.
I think I'm fine. I think you walked it through.
I trust you, yeah. I'm okay. I did have this piece.
Yeah.
I did have the note. All right, so, so yeah, so the changes that I did, so the the newer assessment that I came up with, market value is eight fifteen, nine forty-four. And that brings us down to an assessment of five seventy-one, one sixty. And so what that included is changing that area above the finished garage to accessory studio, removing the additional, if you look at the copy that you do have, that has that eight sixty-two, seven fifty-five on the reverse side. There is a kitchen fifteen, six, twenty-five, that was removed, that additional value was removed. And let's see what else was. Yeah, so the per square footage rate was, brought us down, so making an overall change of to that. And if you want to take a look at the card, I can go ahead and just send that to you right now. I'm happy.
Okay, to, on Unique ID three one one six eight two zero zero, set the new value of five seven one one six zero. Can I get a second?
Seconded. Aye.
Next up is twenty-one Goodrich. This is the one where what was it that, right after he bought it, he had to replace the well or something like that? Remember, guys?
That one. There's like, and he's got like his whole family. It's not just some dude with a.
Yeah.
I remember that one.
Okay. We do have a card in here, looks like a new card. I did go in on that one in February, on February twenty-first. The new owner walked me through the entire property. It didn't look like anybody had really been in it in a long time. And I did observe that there's a lot of adjustments that needed to be done. And so I went ahead and did it for the twenty-twenty grand list, and I think you should have that. So what I came up with was a new market value of three twenty-seven, two sixty-nine. And that current assessment.
Do you have overall condition as average? That should be reduced down to.
It was very, no, that was very good condition, and I lowered it down to average. Now again, keep in mind that that overall condition is based on the year built.
Okay.
Okay, so other than just overall, I changed, yeah, so for a seventeen eighty house, it's an average condition. Otherwise, nobody could live in that house.
It's still standing.
Yes. Okay, so I did more than that. I also made other changes too. I brought down.
I don't know that I have a card that shows any changes. The only card I have is the total market value of four twenty-six. Oh, nope, nope, nope. It was just, I'm sorry, I do have it. It was just further in the package, apologies.
Okay, so you have the one that shows a three twenty-seven, two sixty-nine? Okay. All right, and on the bottom, if you take a look at the comments that I put down, of everything that I, you know, took note of appears in the notes.
What was it originally?
It was originally four twenty-six, oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this works. Should we make a motion?
Yep. Motion on Unique ID three one three four five eight zero zero. The appraise, excuse me, that's, what do we have here? Where is the?
You're looking for the assessment?
Yeah.
Okay, it's above the notes, above the comments. The one that says current is the changes that I made.
Was that the one sixty-nine?
No, one sixty-nine. No, 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 that's the land, the one sixty-nine is the land below that. Look down below that, you'll have the years sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And the one that says current is my changes.
Okay, two twenty-nine zero nine zero.
Seconded.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Jennifer, sorry, my handwriting is really bad. You'll see. All right, next we have nineteen East Weetlock. That was that's the house right next to, Flamingo, what I'm saying? It's not flamingo.
Yeah.
Oh, not Tole Metal either. The other one. Roseville. The brown house going next to it. You guys remember? This is a quiz.
Remember a house by Roseville, where right now I'm not remembering, I'm not remembering this. Failing the quiz.
Correctly. Kind of in rough shape.
Unfortunately, that one, you had asked for the assessor or someone to go in, and that was after the COVID started, and we haven't been able to go in.
That's okay. So I remember right off the bat, we have it in average good condition. I do remember pictures too, I believe, right?
There's an assessment, right? But, sorry, an appraisal.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's for the pictures there.
Can you find the number on the appraisal yet?
Oh.
Two forty-seven, right?
Yep. Five two six. Thanks for flagging that for us. And we had it at two sixty-three, and they are saying two thirty-five. When was the appraisal done? That's pretty recent.
June of twenty nineteen. I mean, it's like this house is worth more than that.
But I'm thinking what might would be the difference for twenty seventeen, but probably not that much.
So everything can just use the appraised number? Yeah, the appraisal number? That's someone who was actually, who was actually able to get into the house.
I'm okay with, with that. Do you think
My guess is
accurate, or you think it's too high?
If you have the same, same result.
I doubt it was that much. It doesn't look like these things are things that fell up seventeen and twenty nineteen.
All right, so you could be three one nine, one eight eight, zero, zero. Set the Okay, so set the appraised value at, I'm sorry, set value at one seven three, two sixty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. On that assessed value, please?
Yeah, assessed value is one seven three, two six eight.
And that's assessed, not appraised?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So is
There just leaves us thirty-three.
The last one? What's that?
No, there's more in there.
There's more?
You want to do that one now?
Is that our last one? Because we, since you have to step away.
Well, I'll just mute myself.
Okay.
So this is the one where there was the issue where the foundation of the house was laid on what ended up being bad construction and fill, right?
Yeah. And it's caused major foundation damage since.
So I guess I'll start. Francine, do you have any recommendations on on this? And if none specifically, can you talk a little bit about how towns that have been affected by the, the crum- the crumbling foundation issue, which I know isn't what we have? But how have towns been handling that from a, from a house value and taxes perspective?
I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm sorry, I haven't really been following that or looking into it because it didn't affect Simsbury at all, or our area around Simsbury. So I can't even I, I don't want to comment on it since I don't have, um, yeah.
Well, I'm guessing we could start off with the overall condition and move, do that first?
Yeah. I can, I can play with that or, you know, do what you would like me to do. Which property is that again? I just want to pull the card out for it.
Thirty-three Carver, C-A-R-V-E-R, circle.
All right, so let me go on the system here. Give me the Unique ID for it.
Unique ID, three zero two zero zero nine zero zero.
All right, so I have thirty-three Carver Circle up in my CANA system here. And we currently have that as an average good condition. And was there, was there an appraisal on that?
I don't believe so.
I, again, I'm, okay.
I'll take a look.
Shaun, was that condition, I, can we ask him? If that average good condition was just to answer yes or no? We have thirty-three Carver Circle as average good condition, Shaun. Does that seem appropriate for the condition of the, okay. All right.
No.
So it would be the
It would be
Would be an adjustment for physical deterioration is what we most likely.
I remember his mom stating that things roll across the floor, you know, in the kitchen, like the, the floor is tilted because of the settling and how dramatic that is.
All right, so do you want me to go and change the condition down to average? And see what, what that does? Is that what you're asking me to do?
I think it's lower than average, yeah.
You should, the letters should all be there in your packet. But
So, my, my thought So, so I see a lot of parallels to the crumbling foundation issue. And, you know, we may come across other things in town that, that, I, I'm trying to, you guys have heard me, right? I'm trying to come up with a consistent way to think through this problem. You know, we've got a, a house that, at the time it was built, had decisions made was going to be set up, that are setting this path, based, based on the expert opinion that we got included in here, on a road where it will at one point be not usable because the foundation's going to continue deteriorating. Is that also your understanding of where we are, Lori, with this house?
Well, the difference, though, with this home and crumbling foundations, the crumbling foundation homes have the potential to be repaired. Whereas this, it's the land itself that is defective because it was a fill site, and so that means that you can't repair it. Would be my, would be my guess without extreme cost and pulling every, you know, all the land, all the fill out, all the dirt out and debris and then rebuilding. So I think there's a difference there.
What I can do on this one, then, if you want me to take a look at that, is make a an adjustment on the land, because based on what you're saying, there should be an adjustment on the land value.
Is it the land value, or is it the, oh, I see what you mean, because it's the argument that if we're saying that it's a problem with the land itself, then the land itself wouldn't be able to have a functioning house on it. And so it's, as a, as a useful parcel of land, it's not. Right?
And so based on, based on that information, as the assessor, if that had come to me before, I most likely would have made an adjustment on the land value because of knowing now what that site has. So there should be an adjustment made there. That's what I would do.
And then maybe on top of that, since the house is already physically depreciating, the physical depreciation we were talking about before, on top of that.
Exactly, so.
And then as the house continues to deteriorate, that'll be the knob that keeps getting So yeah, I mentioned what those numbers look like. Excuse me, I've got something in my eye. Usually well out of my contacts at this point in the night.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that information with me to and it wasn't anything that I was aware of before the grand list was filed.
So we're looking to also drop the home condition down to poor?
The condition of the physical depreciation, or, or both. I, I don't, I don't have a good sense on how those numbers play with each other.
I don't either, and for now, condition, but then depreciation after that going forward. If it can't be repaired.
What information do you have that was provided by the property owner from the review, by a builder, or there was something?
Yeah, we have the engineer's report.
Engineer's report, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, when we initially heard it, the property owner Diane came and walked us through it.
Okay, and what did that indicate? So I can then put notes on the card also based on that?
Sure, that indicated that the foundation of the building was, was placed on the fill site for that development. And because of that, as that construction fill deteriorates, right, as the wood rots and all of that, the foundation isn't on something solid. And so what's happening to the house is that the bottom is just falling out from under the house. And so there's going to continue to be a depreciation, and it's not it's not a reversible thing. Or, or a fixable thing. And then the engineer's report goes into a lot of detail about how the house is already starting to see the, the results of that having happened. So pictures about doors aren't square anymore, and things are leaning, and, you know, I think there was something with cracks in a floor somewhere. Yeah, cracks in the basement, cracks in the foundation. You know, that whole bottom is just coming out from under it. Again, it's not, it's not a poor issue with the foundation. It's not like there was something wrong with the concrete. It's just on a rotting, non-structural mess.
Yeah, the con- the conclusion is the damage to the Bertel residence is a result of long-term, measured in years, differential settlement due to improper backfilling of the property, which is a construction defect and not a result of a discrete event.
And so the problem that the property owners have in it, having is insurance isn't covering it. Because it's not like a tree fell on my house. You know, it's where, it's happened over time, and it goes back to the point that it was constructed.
All right, so so I've made an adjustment to the land. The twenty-five percent influence factor for the land. I've also made an external obsolescence of ten percent. I've changed the condition of the house currently down to average. Was that the, where you wanted me to put the condition? We'll try to follow what you want me to put down here.
I, I tend to think it's poor.
I think it's poor too. The, the, the pictures in the report are, are pretty extensively showing that there's there's damage that the owner's already living through. And it's not the result of, you know, deferred maintenance, or, you know, go clean your gutters. It really is just the house is starting to just fall apart. So I, I think that's poor condition.
And so what was the value that they wanted on it, that you wanted me to? Are you wanting me to approve the value that they're asking?
Yeah, what, with those, with those adjustments, what do you get for fair market? Sorry, or assessed, whichever one is, is popping out there.
Let me get that to here. Down to one thirty-four, eight.
Okay. All right. And that was taking, you took twenty-five percent from the
Twenty-five percent on the land, ten percent functional, I can, external obsolescence. And putting it down to a poor condition.
Um, can I ask, going forward, does a property like this get de- Um, can I ask, going forward, does a property like this get depreciated then through? Because it's noted that there's this kind of issue, and it's irreparable, repairable, without, you know, it's just not worth the value.
The depreciation is based on the year built, so there are overrides and the condition of the house, okay? So it's based on the condition of the house and the year we're built, the cond, the depreciation. So it will, every re, revow, if that stays in, and we put those notes in, that will continue to depreciate. But also depending on the market. You're muted, Regina. I don't know if you're trying to talk.
I am, sorry about that. Could, could you repeat that number for what we come out to after those adjustments?
134.842, that's market value.
Okay.
Okay.
I think those, those, I can connect those dots. It's not that far off from where the property owner was looking for us to get, and it feels logical and reflective of what's actually happening to the property.
So again, so what I did, just to, but you know, it's a minus 25% influence factor for the land. It's a poor condition. And it's also putting a 10% external obsolescence.
Where does the 10% external obsolescence go on the card? Is that?
It will appear under, when you take a look at, on the back, the reverse side, where you see grade factor in the middle. There's economic depreciation, physical depreciation, and functional depreciation.
Okay. Okay, so you were putting, which one were you adjusting for this?
I did 10% external.
External.
So that's like the, it's under economic depreciation, too, but it's on our camera as external obsolescence, which there's different factors. It could be economic, it could be physical, you know, external of the land area, the, the neighborhood. There's different things that can affect that external obsolescence, and in this case here, although we did put, I did put a, an adjustment on the land, the influence, it is an external obsolescence that possibly cannot be repaired, so it is, it does affect the overall condition of everything.
And, well, so the, I'm just wondering, because I think unlike normal depreciation, this house is just, this is, this house is depreciating in a different way.
Exactly.
So I want, so that's where that will be reflected going forward?
Yeah, so the physical, the physical percentage on it, before I put those adjustments in, was at 29%. Now it's 55%. By putting the condition, the poor condition, based on the age and the other adjustments, it now has a physical deterioration of 55% as opposed to 29, what it had before.
Okay. Okay. So I just want to make sure that's recognized in years going forward, too. We're close. I wish we could get all the way there, but I'm just not sure.
This isn't a problem that we're just going to solve with a, you know, unfortunately, we're, we can't fix the house for the homeowner. And if they're going to get Hampton to get the crumbling foundation money to apply, again, we're not going to help with that. I think these are defensible items that, that'll keep giving the homeowner a way to go, hey, gotta keep turning this knob because the house keeps falling down. I think we lost Lori, which with Sean recusing himself
is a problem.
Quorum. I think we don't have Quorum right now, hold on.
Are you trying to get her?
Yeah. Oh, she texted me. She said it kicked me off again. All right, she knows what's going. Yeah, I'm sure she's trying to get back in. Besides the fact that I spent the rest of my day here at home, remote meetings, this isn't bad. This is better than having to drive home, drive down Hot Meadow in 15 minutes. No, not so much.
A lot of time spent in one spot, isn't it?
With toddlers that are just done with it all.
How old are your children?
I've got an 18-month-old and an almost four-year-old. My strategy, though, is I'm just going to ignore the fact that he turns four in the beginning of June if we're not done with this. What does he know? He'll, he'll turn four in August when we can see people again.
No drive-by party?
I'd rather, I'd, I'd rather just lie to him and tell him he's still three for another month. He's already a little freaked out about his birthday. His last birthday ended when a couple of bears walked through the backyard with a bunch of three-year-olds. Not like, like no one was in danger. It was fine. The bears weren't interested, but, um, as he's gotten closer to his birthday, he's been asking about bears a lot.
Oh.
So, so he's like, we need to have my birthday cake inside the house so the bears can't eat it. He's very concerned about this.
Wow, poor kid. And then this year, if the bears show up, he'll never want another birthday party again.
I guess. We had, we had one kid who was at the party last year. He was a little older. He was already, that, that kid turns five this year. And he went to another birthday party like two weeks after our kid's birthday party, and he said to his dad, so when does the bear come? Like he just, he had seen a bear at one birthday party, so all birthday parties must have bears. Um, Lori, so I think we're ready to make a motion.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is for Unique ID 30200900. We are making three adjustments. One is to put in a 10% external obsolescence factor on the property. The next is to, sorry.
Go, go right ahead.
Okay, just making sure I'm saying it right. Next is to change the condition of the house to a poor condition. And then the third change is to put in a minus 25% land influence factor. And those changes will bring the market value. I'll do the math. Hold on.
134.842.
Thank you.
Was market, right?
Yes.
Correct.
4842, so, times 0.7.
94390.
So yeah, I come up with an assessed value, 94389.
Yeah, the system rounds it to 390.
That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. And the system looks like it's launching, trying to get me in again. I was in for a moment there. Not sure what's happening. It just keeps, you know, well, not keep, just keeps, but twice it's just shut down and shuts down my whole computer, so.
Hmm. It's creepy.
All right. All right. So what do we have left?
Okay, so.
You're mute, you're in mute, Sean. I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. No.
Okay, weird. All right, um, does one of you guys have the, the paperwork for that? I don't have, I don't have it.
For?
For Ms. Bertel's?
All I have is this. Does somebody have the actual, uh, package?
Below that page?
I have a photocopy of the application.
Okay. One of you has the application?
Oh, Lori may.
Can one of you, who has it, fill in that? Where are the voting stuff, blah, blah, blah?
Lori, do you have the real application? All I have is a photocopy.
I do have the real application, which we had, which Diane and Sean signed. Okay.
Perfect.
So the new assessment is 90. I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Just put that maybe on the top, so that that can get filed in with all the stuff that I have signed for the rest of them. Regent?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving on, I have, um, this is, uh, Mr. Nygro, Tom Nygro, motor vehicle, Kia Rondo. I think it was just a mileage adjustment.
Yes, this was a mileage adjustment that was requested after the grand list was signed. But prior to the Board of Assessment Appeal Meeting. And it was based on the mileage adjustment.
It's one that we, it's one, it's an adjustment that we would have done. And is that one that they had provided us with information, but we didn't process it, Jennifer? I'm trying to remember now.
Came in to me and on February 5th. And I took the mileage information, not realizing that we shouldn't have because we couldn't make the adjustment to the grand list on the assessor's side. So it needs, needed to go to BAA, but we're presenting it on their behalf.
Gotcha, okay.
It was a misinformation provided to the property owner, so that would be an assessment correction that I would have done anyways, but we can't do that, so we, we're looking for your approval to process it.
Okay, so, and the adjustment is to set the, assess value of 2485, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Unique ID 2019 MV 63557, set the, uh, I guess, that is the net value of 2485. Send me that second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Oh, I cannot see you all, but I'm hearing I'm on the screen. No, it just says Zoom. Let's see. It's okay. Ah, there we go. All right, I was wondering, it's not a very comfortable feeling. So, all right, good deal.
Okay, the next one I have, Mary Thompson, 3D Gillette Court, was a note show. So Unique ID 32000300, motion to take no action.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. All right, I have one last one, is that correct? Does everybody else have?
You have 38, well, it's just, it's been, you have made your recommendation. The paperwork has not been signed.
Okay. So do we need to?
Need it signed.
Just signed, so we already voted and everything?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
For no action was made, made already. Just didn't get signed.
I see it, okay.
Make sure you have everything, because this is it. There are no other meetings after this.
A promise or a threat?
Is everything I do we have here, is it?
You need to review the
Oh, in a minute.
March 12th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Well, we'll need one more meeting after this to approve this meetings minutes, right?
Yes.
That'll be done in September.
Would you have to set this evening that date?
Okay. Have you guys had a chance to, to read the minutes? Do you have them running?
I saw that amendment made.
Um, so the only change I would make, I, I am a Ms., so, to just MS, if you don't mind.
I'd actually like to make the same request there, MS. Okay.
Okay, everything else looks pretty good to me, so make a motion to, um,
Except the minutes is not.
Yeah, as amended. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, set a meeting date for September. Probably, anytime, we have to be done by the end of the day, right? Okay. Any, anybody have anything particular days that they want? My, my gut is to go, it's like the 17th, right in the middle, Thursday.
Okay. That works for me.
All right, that's.
Okay, fourth one. Hello?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
September 17th, 4 o'clock, main meeting room. September seventeenth, four o'clock, main meeting room. For any motor vehicle or. Any other business for the board. Can I get a motion for that?
So motioned.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so I think we have concluded our business. I would like to. Send a big thank you to Francine and Jennifer for.
Yeah.
In helping us. And also to the, the gentleman who's watching us from SCTV, wondering why we're still on. Six hours later. And to all of you, to our appellate that were able to join us via Zoom, thank you. Thank you for being understanding of the crisis and finally for everybody to stay safe and stay home.
Right.
You guys have anything like that?
Thank you. Alright, and I just want to add, paperwork, do I have to get the original to the office then? And all the documents from tonight, do we just hand those into you?
And it.
I can come, I'll, since I know where you both live, I'll come by and scoop up all your packets again. Later this week.
That would make my kids' day. They were kind of in love with your truck.
Big truck.
All I heard about the rest of the night. Mommy, mommy, that man had a big truck. Why? I don't know why that man had a big truck, but it was, it was pretty big.
Yeah, I can't wait to get my taxi.
Have you guys adjourned?
Oh. Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.